The time is five thirty P M. I would like to call our work session to order. Mister Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Miss Daniels? Miss Davis?
Present.
Miss Green?
Present.
Mister Jones?
Here.
Miss Rolls?
Present.
Mister Rodriguez?
Present.
Miss Bowers?
Present. Thank you. We will begin with the end in mind this evening. We're going to start with the work of the Public Works Committee, per the request of the Director. So we're gonna honor that request. So I will defer to our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. And today in the Public Works Committee, we will be covering two resolutions. Mister Truesdale, can you read Resolution Seventy-three of twenty twenty-four into the record, please?
Resolution Seventy-three, twenty twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Chris Dawson Architect to provide architectural services for renovation of the restroom facilities at the Public Works Building located at eighteen twenty Paxton Street.
Thank you for that. And I see the Director of Public Works, Director West, thank you for joining us this evening. If you could speak into the mic, please, and give us an overhaul of Resolution Seventy-three.
That's, um, the restrooms in Public Works that need to be restored. And we, they wanna make them ADA compliant. Currently, they are in an eighty to nineties fashion and are not ADA compliant. And we have residents throughout our city into our building to use our restrooms, and they should be ADA compliant.
Okay, all right. Um, I'll open it up for questions. I'll start with my immediate left, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Um, I have no questions at this moment.
Thank you for that. Uh, to my right, Councilwoman Rolls.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. I also, good evening, and I don't have any questions at the moment.
Thank you for that, Madam President.
Good evening. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Madam Vice President.
Good evening. I don't have any questions for you.
Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman, I mean Councilman Rodriguez. Good evening. Thank you for being here this evening. I have no questions. I know the work needs to be done, and so, thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, Director West, is there anything you wanted to add, um, as far as Resolution Seventy-three, uh, is involved? No? All right. Well, with that being said, I move to add Resolution Seventy-three of twenty twenty-four to our next legislative session. Mister Truesdale, can you please read Resolution Seventy-four of twenty twenty-four into the record?
Resolution Seventy-four, twenty twenty-four. A resolution approving the disposal of certain personal property owned by the City of Harrisburg, which has exhausted its useful life for city operations.
Thank you for that. Once again, Director West, uh, would you like to speak about some of the, um, property we have that exhausts its life? And, uh, what we do with some of those finances?
Okay, we have, uh, we have, uh, some of our automobiles. We have, uh, trash trucks and other equipment that has exceeded its life. It has, um, no longer have any use for the City of Harrisburg. It's been on our property. As you are all aware, that, um, we sold half our property of the widening of eighty-three. And that shortens our property from having, uh, space to be able to hold these vehicles as we have been holding them. And because we have no use of them, we need to get as much, uh, financial value that we can. Uh, while they are in existence at the years that they are, the longer we wait, the less we receive from our investment, from our purchase of them. And we also have, uh, uh, parts in our parts department, as you have pictures of, that was on skids. At one time, we had six different brand names of truck equipment. So we had to purchase parts for each, uh, name of equipment. Because we were allowed to sole source, and now we have one company that we buy our equipment from. We have one source that we purchase our parts from. So the, the vehicles that we have sold, that we no lo- that we, we sold in prior years and trying to sell this year, that we no longer need the parts for, the parts also need to be sold as well.
And those parts more than likely have high value, and we could put those funds in somewhere else needed.
Yes.
Absolutely, all right. Um, and I will start with my far right with questions, Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. I don't have any questions.
All right, Madam Vice President.
Thank you very much. It's pretty simple. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Madam President.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rolls?
Good evening again. No questions when it provides revenue for the city, so. No questions when we're getting money. I'm fine.
And speaking of saving money, thank you, Director West, for all your help this season with Hot Spot Saturdays. Uh, Mister Kevin Jackson sent the numbers in, and we were over a hundred and fifty tons for eighteen days. So thank you. And finish it off with Councilman Jones.
No questions.
All right. Um, so with that being said, I move to add Resolution Seventy-four of twenty twenty-four to our next legislative session. And that concludes the work of the Public Works Committee. Uh, you are now excused. Thank you. Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President, for allowing us to speak first.
Thank you. Okay, so if you're following along with our agenda, we'll go back to the top now with the work of the Administration Committee. We have two resolutions for this discussion this evening. Resolution Seventy-two of two thousand and twenty-four and Resolution Seventy-six of two thousand and twenty-four. Mister Truesdale, could you please read Resolution Seventy-two of two thousand and twenty-four into the record?
Resolution Seventy-two, twenty twenty-four. A resolution confirming the appointment of Mister Jonathan L. Luff, Junior, Esquire, to serve as Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you, Mister Luff, if you wouldn't mind joining us?
Mind if I keep my jacket on? It's a little cold down here.
Okay, as long as you speak into the microphone, you may keep your jacket on, or?
Not a problem.
Okay, uh, if you wouldn't mind taking a few minutes to please introduce yourself.
Sure, my name is Jonathan Luff. Friends call me J.J. Um, I am, I've been an attorney now for eleven years.
Could you pull the mic just a little closer to you? Thank you.
You hear me? We're good? All right. Uh, I've been an attorney going eleven years now. Graduated from Drexel University in Philadelphia. I started off as a public defender. Did about three and a half years doing that. Then I went into the private sector, was still doing, uh, criminal defense work. Um, I started my own practice about six, six years ago, twenty eighteen, I think it was. Came to Harrisburg now, and here I am.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, I just have one question for you. I'm just curious, uh, with your varied experiences in the legal community, uh, what value do you believe you will be able to bring to the City of Harrisburg?
Um, I think value that I would be able to bring is just a, kind of a hunger to, to want to make change. Um, I have worked, as I said, exclusively kind of in the criminal defense area. And this allows me to try and maybe stop fighting individually, one-on-one, and to go into government and to be able to help, uh, change structures, right? Change the way the law works in a global scale, or at least here in Harrisburg.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll now open the floor to my colleagues who may have some additional questions for you. I'll begin with Councilman Jones. Any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. How you doing today, sir?
Oh, well, can't complain.
All right, just a couple of general questions. Um, do you think there would be a conflict of interest if you are accepted in this role?
No.
And similar to Council, I mean Council President of Bowers, um, what drew you here?
Um, so my fiancee lives in Harrisburg, so I guess she was the biggest draw.
It's always the case.
Outside of that, uh, my mother actually works in, uh, she works i- i- in city council in Philadelphia. And this is kind of a way for me to be able to get an insight and to be able to work with mom, even from, she works in Philly, I work in Harrisburg. But I have a feeling I'll be able to connect her and bring her up here and show her some of the things that I was able to do and learn from her.
Okay, that seems like a, a good enough reason. Um, again, the reason why I ask again, you know, the Sea of Harrisburg is going through a lot of changes at the moment, and, uh, we definitely need people with an integral, uh, intention to serve here in the City of Harrisburg. So, um, hopefully, you know, you, you are that guy that can help us move, um, our city forward. And I have no further questions.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, what, and you're already playing this in your capacity. One, two, one, two. What do you feel some of your hardest challenges are?
Hardest challenges as far as?
As already in the capacity you're playing thus far.
Um, I would say, you know, the law is very expansive, so the hardest capacity is learning any new area of the law, right? And, um, you wanna make sure that you are well-versed in the law, that you can always educate those. Because people are coming to us with serious, uh, concerns, right? And so I think the main thing to do is keep my mouth shut and to get back into research, which has not always been my favorite thing. But as far as the law is concerned, researching and learning, you can never do enough of it.
Well, thank you for that, Mister Luff, and I look forward to working with you in the near future. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rolls, any questions?
Thank you, President Bauer. Um, most of my questions have been asked and answered. I don't really have any other questions but to say, more of a comment, but to say, uh, be still and stay. Like, I know, a lot of people have been in your position. And I feel like sometimes they don't give it enough time to let the city grow on them and do the work that they've been brought here to do. So all I ask is give us a chance. Don't leave too quick. And, um, I would love to, you know, get a chance to work with you and see the great work that you're gonna do.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Thank you for being here tonight, and, um, thank you for looking to join the City of Harrisburg. I know you've been here for a little bit now, so, um, I know Neil threw you right in, so, uh, how are you liking it so far?
Uh, well, it's, it is great. There is never a, uh, lack of opportunity. There's never a lack of, you know, chance to learn new things. So I appreciate the fact that Neil has shown trust in me and given me things to do right away. So, you know, I, I'm not trying to be up there just twiddling my thumbs. There's work to be done, so I'm trying to get on it.
All right. Thank you. Well, welcome, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers, and good evening, Attorney Luff. Um, thank you for being here. I've been seeing you here every week, um, which is good. Your resume is very impressive, and it's always good to learn, no matter what environment we find ourselves in. And wanting to make a change is also why I'm here. So I look forward to working with you as well as my colleagues, so.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Sure, and apologies for my tardiness. Um, just, uh, are there any existing conflicts of interest that will inhibit any aspects of the work? Or are you completely conflict-free?
No, I, I don't have any conflicts.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, um, I'd like to move to add Resolution Seventy-two of two thousand and twenty-four to our next legislative session for a vote. Thank you.
And Madam President, I will tell you, we have thrown him in the deep end.
Oh, we know you have. We know.
Sorry, I use my lifeguards. I'm proud of myself.
Very good, very good. Okay, next we have Resolution Seventy-six of two thousand and twenty-four. Mister Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Seventy-six, twenty twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania relating to certain waterway enhancements to better serve the health and safety needs of those of boaters.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Excuse me, if you wouldn't mind providing a brief overview of the resolution.
Sure. Uh, so for the last, uh, many years, the, uh, Burefire has been placing the buoys to mark, um, the famed Dock Street Dam in the Susquehanna River. Uh, Pendot approached us, uh, about a year ago, a little less than a year ago, uh, in the eighty-three bridge expansion project. Uh, they have to mark the dam, uh, to comport with all their regulations. And, uh, as we started to discuss it in pretty much detail, uh, you know, how it would actually work, um, because they would take over, uh, we asked them if they'd be interested in assisting us in putting and placing permanent buoys, uh, into the, uh, bedrock of the river. And they, uh, you know, looked at, uh, what the price would be, and they were agreeable to that, too. They had to pay for it anyway, uh, as part of their bridge project, and this was just another, uh, way that they could give back to the city and help us better mark the dam, uh, permanently, as opposed to with temporary buoys that always wash away in the springtime.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to know, are there other collective, uh, officials or organizations involved? Um, the resolution notes the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission. You mentioned Pendot, uh, with assistance from the Governor's Office. So I just wanted to add them. Are they involved?
Yes, I believe they're the big players. We were just on a conference call on Friday, uh, with the Governor's Office, Pendot, and, uh, Fish and Boat. So they're all on board. There will be other mechanisms included as well. We'll have to go through D E P for some permitting and things. But, uh, under everything we've talked with, Pendot's gonna take care of all the permitting.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Um, I don't have any other questions. Um, I'll open the floor to my colleagues. I'll begin. I'll switch it up this time. I'll begin to my left with Councilwoman Rolls. Any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Um, good evening, uh, Director Interline. Thank you for being here. And I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chief, for joining us. Uh, mine is more of a parliamentary inquiry. Um, being a, I guess, well, being a certified instructor with Fish and Boat, would it be a conflict at all, uh, on the vote and during the legislative?
I, I, I do not believe so, but I don't know what a certified instructor in Fish and Boat does.
We instruct students, like, we work under Fish and Boat?
You would not be a decision-maker there, so it would not.
Okay, okay, perfect. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Yes, uh, how you doing today, Chief Interline?
Excellent.
So, uh, you know, of course, public safety is one of my number-one priorities, if not the most. Um, I think this is, um, I'm in support of anything that is going to help our public be safe. So can you explain, um, for our viewers and some people that may not be aware of what the buoys do, how, what the markings of the buoys are there for, and how this affects or protects, uh, the residents and anyone utilizing, uh, the river?
Sure, that's, that's gonna be a fun walk. Uh, we, we currently, uh, marked the, the dam with, uh, removable buoys. They're, they're temporary buoys with a fifty-pound weight, uh-
They're, they're temporary buoys with a fifty-pound weight, uh, on the bottom of them, attached to some, uh, five-eighth-inch chain and a, about a ten-inch round buoy. Um, and they mark the, uh, both the, uh, upstream and downstream side to alert boaters and anybody else in the river that there's a low-head dam ahead. Uh, those, because of the, the movement of the river, um, th- that we see, significant rises, right? We go, we're about three-point-two feet right now, uh, historically low. Uh, and, you know, in the spring, we were at sixteen feet. So it's a significant, uh, rise that we see in the river from the snowmelt and everything north of us. Uh, those buoys typically wash away. We can't put anybody on the river to bring them back in because of the danger, uh, of going out when that river starts to go up. Uh, so these buoys, uh, will be, uh, they're larger, number one. Now, they're about the three-foot in diameter. Uh, and then they will, they will be attached to the bedrock, uh, with one-inch chain. Uh, so thi- this chain's about as big as my arm is. It, it's a significant chain. It's been used successfully in places in Canada where, and we were, we talked about icing and things like that with, uh, ice movement on the river. Um, and they have these in places in Canada and things like that where they're dealing with the ice and the flows that we are here in, uh, Harrisburg. So, uh, the other thing that these are gonna do, that because they're so large, uh, they will give, uh, anybody, you know, we see sometimes, uh, boat motors fail in the river, and that, that happens anywhere. Um, but in the event that happens, somebody could actually, instead of having to paddle the nearly mile-wide river, um, they're able to grab onto these buoys and, uh, and, and hold on to them. They're, they're substantial, and they won't move with that, uh, vessel that's in the water. So I, I think that's, that's one of the biggest things, uh, y- you know, n- not only from the marking standpoint, but they'll be able to be used as a anchoring point if you are in trouble. We don't want people anchoring to them to fish.
Right.
Must point that out.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, I have no further questions. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Yes, thank you, President Bowers. Good evening, Chief Ederline.
Good evening.
So it's always good to ensure that we are looking out for the safety of our, or anyone who's using the river, reducing accidents and reducing collision. But what I'd like to know is how are you or the city planning to on maintaining these buoys?
Excellent question, uh, and that was one of the things that we looked at. Um, these buoys, uh, once they are permanently installed, uh, they are of a material that has a fifty-year warranty to it. Um, so they're extruded plastic, uh, with some other materials inside. Uh, and they will actually, uh, go under the water. They're designed to go under the water as the water comes up. So we get up to twelve feet, they will, they will actually, actually be submerged, uh, as opposed to being above, uh, and that's when the dam isn't dangerous, if you will. So, uh, they do come with a fifty-year warranty, which is one of the big reasons, uh, we were looking at these. Uh, a- and again, they, they have a long history of installing these in, in several other communities with a river that is violent, is what ours is.
So will the, uh, buoys have navigational charts on them or some kind of sensor inside of them to direct people who are out in boats in case of a storm or?
N- no, they're, they, they won't have it. They're, they're not, so they're not like a marker that you would see in the bay or, or, uh, out in the ocean as you're navigating a, a, a large waterway like that.
And how much would it cost to maintain for the maintenance, ongoing maintenance? And how often will that have to be done?
So we don't believe that there'll be much maintenance at all, uh, as a, a- and I, I think it's important to note, once these are installed, uh, PennDOT will maintain them for the duration of the bridge expansion project, which is about six years. Uh, so the city won't pick up that until after that six-year mark. Um, a- a- at what time? A- and I believe that probably the biggest thing would be, you know, if, if you will, just cleaning any of the debris or sediment that might, uh, attach to them as they're underwater during the winter season.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Sorry, so just to clarify, PennDOT will install and maintain for six years, and then we are responsible afterwards.
Correct, and we're still working out all the details on how and when they're gonna be installed. Uh, and, and that's something that, a- again, we just had a meeting with PennDOT on Friday of, of what that looks like. So, uh, they will maintain them for that duration, uh, because they're required to have them, uh, in their Aton plan, so.
And then if something happens and they can't be installed, let's say there's something wrong with the rock or there, there's something, what, I guess, it m- moves? We're not on the hook for any expenses that were wasted, right?
No, no, um, and so, uh, you know, not to, not to get all nerded out. Um, I've already worked with the, uh, state geologist, um, and learned a lot about the, uh, material underneath the riverbed, more than I probably needed to know. Uh, and so we are confident, uh, that the river rock underneath there will have enough of depth to it, uh, to be able to anchor and drill, make the, the, uh, required drill holes, uh, to, uh, attach those to the, to the bottom.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further questions for Chief Enerline. I move to add Resolution 76 of 2024 to our next legislative session agenda for a vote. This concludes the work of the Administration Committee. We will now move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. I will defer to our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, uh, Councilwoman Daniels, to lead discussion.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Truesdale, do you mind reading Resolution 75 hyphen 2024 into the record, please?
Resolution 75, 2024. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development plan for eleven oh three South Front Street.
Thank you, and, um, Mr. Knight, if you don't mind giving us a summary for the city and if the applicants don't mind coming forward. And I apologize, I was, I'm coming from someplace else, I didn't have the time to pick up my laptop, so, um, I usually ask you to be brief, but if you could be a little bit more detailed this time since I don't have the ordinance in front of me.
Uh, sure. Um, so the current, uh, application, um, for the preliminary land development plan for eleven oh three South Front Street, um, this is the tunnels-to-towers, uh, development. Um, the applicants are proposing to, uh, construct a transitional housing development, um, well, transitional and permanent. Um, it does have the, um, uh, residents will have the option of, uh, permanent residency at the, at the site. Um, for homeless veterans, uh, featuring two types of housing accommodations along with associated site and access improvements. Uh, the project includes a mixed-use building, um, with tenant services and community functions on the first floor and sixty-four units on the two floors above, and twenty detached comfort homes, uh, which are effectively, um, tiny homes, um, that are, uh, similar to those, uh, in the VOPA facility that council members may be familiar with, although they're a little bit more robust. They have a small kitchenette and bathroom facilities, so they are a full, uh, unit as opposed to those other, uh, facilities. Um, the applicants received, uh, zoning hearing board approvals for the proposed use and, um, for, uh, other aspects of the project, uh, in, I believe, June of this year. Uh, and so they're coming before, and last Tuesday, uh, council heard the subdivision for this property, uh, in which the existing fifteen-acre site is going to be, uh, subdivided, uh, east-west. And the northern eight-and-a-half acres, uh, will be, uh, the site of this proposed development. Um, and the southernmost six-and-a-half acres will, uh, be the site of a proposed, um, um, homeless, uh, supportive housing facility, uh, for homeless individuals, uh, that has not yet been submitted, uh, through, uh, the Land Development Review Process. Uh, for the, uh, current proposal, um, the primary, uh, considerations are, uh, both the, uh, type of use. Um, and again, it's very similar to the VOPA facility, which is at the southern end of this site, and, um, in many ways represents a, um, uh, kind of expansion of, uh, that facility in that, um, I believe the residents of the VOPA facility will be allowed to, um, I guess, graduate, uh, to this particular facility, but they'll also be taking in, uh, other, um, individuals that they identify, um, through, uh, working with other organizations um, in the community. Uh, and, um, the, really, the major, I think, issue is, uh, the, uh, impact on the green belt. Um, the, uh, facility will be located on the footprint of the green belt where it, uh, runs between the southernmost end of the Dolphin County General Authority property, uh, and then the, uh, small bridge over the railroad tracks, uh, connecting to the east side there. Uh, in, um, many discussions, uh, both between, uh, the applicants and other stakeholders and at the Planning Commission meetings, uh, it was eventually, uh, determined that, um, the applicants, uh, were not going to be able to accommodate the green belt on, uh, the footprint of the property. Uh, and, um, I know the, um, applicants have been working with, uh, the city and the Capital Area Green Belt Association on finding alternatives, uh, for that. Uh, but I did want to, uh, make a note of that, uh, for two reasons. Um, one, the, uh, retention, uh, of the green belt, um, is no, is noted as a condition, um, adopted by the Planning Commission in their resolution. Uh, and, uh, two, just noting, um, that, uh, the retention, uh, and, um, improvement of the green belt is noted as a, a goal, both in the city's zoning code as well as our comprehensive plan. Um, that being said, uh, you know, there are, uh, alternatives, um, for how that can be accommodated. And, uh, again, I know the applicants are, uh, working, uh, with the Green Belt Association, um, the city and other stakeholders on identifying those and, um, preparing engineering studies and reviews. Uh, so with all of that being said, uh, the Planning Commission has recommended that City Council approve the proposal, uh, with the following conditions. Uh, the applicant should redesign the pedestrian access through the middle of the project site, uh, which connects the front entrance to the building and the riverfront overlook, using raised crosswalks across the drive aisles to prioritize pedestrian safety and ADA accessibility. And, uh, what this would basically be is similar to the raised crosswalks at, uh, some of the traffic circles on North Second Street, for example, that were created, um, so that as people are driving through, they kind of, kind of go up over a speed, uh, table. Uh, and what this is intended to do is, um, to kind of prioritize pedestrians and especially, um, any of, anybody with disabilities, uh, as they maybe go from the facility, which will have about three-quarters of the residents, out to the planned overlook, uh, along the river. Um, and it keeps speeds low and makes sure drivers are paying attention as they go through the parking lot. Um, the applicant shall and s- should install landscape screening around the proposed parking areas to prevent, uh, headlights spillover into residential units. And as you can see in the, um, site plan there, the applicants have, they're, do have parking spaces that will be facing toward the comfort homes. And so for the, uh, benefit of the resident, future residents of those, of those units, um, we have, uh, the landscape screening to prevent that over, uh, that, um, light spillover. Uh, the Planning Bureau is recommending that the applicant continue coordination with the city arborist regarding required landscaping, screening and trees, the retention of existing mature trees, uh, on-site where possible, and the installation of native plants and pollinator plants in landscaped areas throughout the site and, uh, more specifically around the proposed stormwater detention basins. And you see those, um, at the, um, southern and, uh, western, uh, edges of the property. Uh, and then finally, the project will accommodate a relocated footprint of the Capital Area Green Belt, including the removal of the proposed vehicular gate and fence across the existing connection to the green belt where the emergency access road along the western portion of the site intersects with the Dolphin County General Authority property. Based on the proposed site design, the green belt can be accommodated across the southern boundary of the property, connecting the existing bridge over the railroad tracks to the emergency access road along the western boundary of the property. Uh, and again, I kind of alluded, uh, to that condition earlier, uh, in my description and to, uh, some of the, uh, work that the applicants are doing, uh, with the city, um, with CACA and with other stakeholders, um, about ensuring, uh, the continuation of the green belt in South Harrisburg in a manner that's, uh, safe, uh, and enjoyable for all users of the public. Uh, the Planning Commission recommended that City Council approve the request for the following reasons. The applicants have received approval from the zoning hearing board for the various zoning relief requests needed to effectuate the project as proposed. Uh, the proposed project will meet a critical need, housing for homeless, uh, individuals, and will specifically target a group of veterans who are disproportionately represented in the homeless population. Will provide quality accessible units that improve their standard of living and will introduce a housing approach that may be a template for future projects. Uh, the project represents a continuation of recent development projects in this area intended to provide accommodations and services for those experiencing homelessness. And finally, if the, uh, recommended conditions of approval are adopted, the proposed project will result in improvements to the site that will provide benefits to the greater public welfare, including, including increased vegetation and ecological biodiversity, improved connectivity and mobility for project residents and retention and formalization of green belt access for project residents and the general public.
Thank you. And what, what flood zone is this in?
Uh, so the, in, the entirety of the, uh, property is located in the, um, five-hundred-year flood plain, the Zone X flood plain. Uh, the portions of the property along the eastern and western edges, uh, are located in the AE, which is the hundred-year flood plain. Uh, that does not get any further, um, east from the Susquehanna River than the existing access road there, so it will not impact any of the proposed, um, structures on the project site. And I do not believe it gets any further, um, east, or sorry, any further west than the primary access road, um, on the east side of the project. So, uh, the proposed structure should not be impacted, um, by the, uh, hundred-year flood designation.
Okay, thank you. Um, so if the applic- applicants wouldn't mind, um, describing your project, timelines, um, uh, yeah.
Thank you very much for having us. Good evening. Uh, I'm Bruce Grossman from Caldwell &amp; Kearns. I represent, uh, the applicant. Joining me tonight is Luis Menendez, Director of Construction for the Foundation, Betsy Davidson from H. Edward Black, the engineers on the project. Uh, we also have Justin Hol- Holcomb, Director of Legal, uh, Government Affairs for the Foundation. And joining us in the audience tonight is Peggy Grove, the original owner of the land that this project is, uh, going to be built on. What I'd like to do is have Mr. Holcomb briefly explain the foundation and its mission to you. And then we have a terrific video to show you, a brief video, uh, two minutes, of what the project is going to look like. And then, uh, I and, uh, all of us are available to answer your questions. So with your indulgence, please, Justin, would you?
I'd just like to, uh, thank the council for this opportunity. It's been, uh, most of the year, we've, we've been up here, and it's been exciting every time I get to come up and, uh, explore the city and get to know it better. Um, I think it is important that we understand why we're here. Uh, you, you all understand the Tunnel to Towers Foundation just a little bit better. Um, this is not a, a hedge fund that got together last year and decided to spend a billion dollars to help veterans. This foundation was started on September eleventh, two thousand and one. Our founder's youngest brother, Stephen Siller, was a firefighter in New York. Um, after the first plane hit the south tower, uh, Stephen was actually on his way, uh, to play golf with his brothers. Um, he got news that the first plane hit, and he called his wife and said, hey, uh, cancel my golf, my, uh, tee time with my brothers. I'm going to help my, uh, other brothers, my, my firefighter brothers, um, fight this fire. Fight this, this thing that happened that they didn't know what had happened yet. Um, Stephen pulled his truck off, onto the side of the road. The Brooklyn Battery Tunnel was closed. Um, he jumped out of his truck, threw sixty pounds of gear onto his back, ran over three miles through the tunnel, back to the World Trade Center. Uh, Stephen later died that day, saving lives. Our foundation was created right then and there. Since then, the foundation very quickly has built, uh, or paid off the mortgages of over fifteen-hundred homes for fallen first responders, Gold Star families, catastrophically injured veterans. Uh, dozens and dozens right here in this state. We will continue to pay off mortgages and build smart homes for dozens more in this state as well. Um, so we, we, we already have a presence here. We're excited to be in Harrisburg. This is a massive twenty-million-dollar project. We're not asking the city for a dime. We're not asking for, from Pennsylvania for a dime. This is one-hundred percent privately funded. We're not fundraising off this. The money's already ready to go. Uh, we'd like to get this started as, as soon as possible, and we just appreciate the council. Um, I've already met with a few of you to answer questions, but, uh, appreciate y'all's time during this process. And, uh, we look forward to moving ahead, uh, soon. So thank you.
So, uh, what's your expected start time on the construction for the project?
As soon as possible. Um, that's, that's the short answer. I mean, we're, we're in the process of going through, uh, our approval, obviously. And, uh, we are in, at this, at this moment with our final site plan, which we believe is complete. And, uh, we're in a position to go to, uh, through a bidding process to, uh, button up our site work. Our building component, because there's two parts to the project. It's the civil, uh, uh, improvements and then the actual superstructure that needs to be constructed. So right now, we're in the process of designing that building. We have identified a manufacturer for the building. So as soon as we are able to move the process forward, once we get our site plan approv- approval, that will give us an opportunity to begin the process of buttoning up our contracts for the manufacturing of the, of the units and be able to be in a position to start construction once permits are issued. And we're hoping that we're able to do that starting somewhere in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
With your indulgence, we'd like to show you a very brief video that, of what the project is going to look like and do. Would you mind, Mr. Truesdale? Thank you for watching.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, we'd be glad to answer questions. I'd just like to say, at the beginning, as Mr. Knight explained, the Green Belt is not going away. The Green Belt is going to continue. A portion of it that was previously on this property is, we're working with the Green Belt Association and the city to develop a relocation plan down Sycamore Street. It seems very viable. Mr. Hill is here, President of the Green Belt Association, and has, can explain the exploratory steps that are being taken. So the Green Belt is going to continue. That's the most important thing I can say tonight about the Green Belt. We're available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up to council. I'll start to the far left, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. How are you? How's everyone this evening? Good, good. First, let me say that I think this is a great project. Anytime that we get to champion the men and women that served our country to for our continued liberties is a good thing. This being phase one, as I heard you say. I think there's no issues here. We have the approvals from the zoning hearing board, but the potential for phase two is one of the questions that I have, some of the things that you may incur in the second part of your construction. I see Ms. Grove is in attendance, and if I may ask, you know, are you in favor of this? Or does this impede on any of, you're selling your property, correct? All right, and, go ahead. Can you step to the mic, please?
Well, I'm sorry, is Ms. Grove a party to this?
She owns the land.
So is she the applicant?
No.
She's not the applicant. The equitable contract man, he is the applicant. She's simply here in support of the project.
And that's what I'm asking Councilwoman Daniels, to make sure that, you know, I know she's selling the property, that she's in, that's all. I'm just asking a question.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Thank you.
Years ago, tunnels, I mean, VOPA project.
You state your name, please.
I'm sorry, Peggy Grove, 2920 Parkside Lane in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. And I used to sit on council from '94 to 2002, and my committees were community economic development and building and housing. So I'm familiar with all the work you guys do behind the scenes, and I thank you for all of your time that you spend as, you don't make enough money. Part of it's volunteer, for sure. That being said, five years ago, tunnels, I mean, I keep saying tunnels to towers because that's on my mind tonight, the VOPA project came to me, and it also was for veterans, tiny homes that helped them to recuperate and go from homelessness to productive citizens. And this project was brought to me by a board member of that, that particular project. And, and they explained to me this project, and it dovetails, as you said previously. And I'm very, very impressed with, with all of the, all three projects that are going. There's a third project that you may hear about this evening. It's Eden Village, which is a faith-based project for affordable housing. And they also have various components to their project that help the people learn budgeting and, and get how to increase their job potential, take care of children's healthcare and children's other, you know, other things. It's more family-oriented than, than these other two projects are. So the all three matched together, and it was my vision to help the city of Harrisburg to have more housing, affordable housing, as well as housing for the homeless. So I thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, so my other question would be, thank you for showing that, your support in this project as well. I'm gonna ask you about two more questions. One being, like I asked, I mean, stated earlier, are there any potential issues that you can foresee in the second or even third phase? I'm very familiar with the Eden, I think that was council, former councilman Lawson that is involved in the Eden Village as well. But do you see any potential issues moving forward after the first part of this project?
I'm not sure what I, I understand what you mean by phases. In the sense of, we view this project as a single entire project, and that's all that we're responsible for.
Okay.
So I'm not sure I understand.
Because I just heard, I just heard, can you say your name again?
Menendez.
Menendez, okay, so I apologize.
Our project is single phase.
Okay.
It's an entire project consisting, and I think I may have confused, confused the issues a little bit when I spoke about site work and then superstructure work. It's all part of the same project.
Okay.
We just look at it as two parts, where we're able to do the infrastructure and the site development, and while we're at the same time dealing with the superstructure, which would come in on top of the site work. So that's how we look at it.
Got you.
But those two phases make up the single project.
Okay, thank you. Other thing would be, some of the services, can you explain to the viewers, the listeners, and my colleagues as well, some of the services that will be provided for the residents that you intend to house? And will some of that, you know, when you're dealing with veterans, people that served and saw active duty, you know, right there by the river, and then we have fireworks. So dealing with the PTSD aspect of some of those residents, are you prepared to handle, you know, those occurrences?
Yeah, so our ground floor, as we talked about before, is our service center. So that's geared towards anything that a veteran resident would require, including your concern about PTSD. To the extent that if it's manageable, we will be able to deal with something like that locally at our facility.
So on-site?
On-site. If it's something that's more severe, we will place that individual in the proper program. We will find where that is through our national case management network or through other partners that we deal with within the community, if it's available, or wherever that veteran would be able to succeed. So if it's something that it's not possible for them to be in this particular environment because of their condition, depending on the severity, we will find a place for him to go. So the services, the wraparound services that we envision for the ground floor deals with substance abuse, deals with PTSD, it deals with other issues that we may not be, you know, cognizant of with dealing with financial support. Many veterans don't understand the, going through the bureaucracy to obtain their vouchers or whatever benefits they may have earned through their service. We provide that support for them to find their way through the bureaucracy to get what they've earned and what they're entitled to. In addition to, we provide workforce training. You may have picked up on the, on the video, there are offices, there is administrative suites within that first floor. It's not only difficult issues or psychological issues that we deal with, but if a veteran has skills, which many do, they come out of the military with a set of skills, many don't know how to transfer that skill to the private sector. We provide the workforce training, and we partner with local businesses to afford the veteran an opportunity to gain employment, and we provide the ability to write a resume, how to interview, and we even have a clothing store within the first floor suite of services, where they can come and get suited if they have to go to an interview. So it varies depending on the needs. So we've thought through what a veteran needs to succeed, and it starts, obviously, with the stable home, which we provide. It's something that they're able to call their own, because they do have to pay rent, so they have skin in the game. But we provide those services that they need in order to become functional members of our society once again.
Okay, thank you. And last question, I don't want to give my colleagues the opportunity, I'll ask a whole bunch, but being that this is a $20 million project, I see that you have MBE and WMBE listed as a place that you want to look to. Is there an actual plan, not only with the WMBE and the MBE, DBE, to actually look for Harrisburg-based contractors? You know, for a project like this, I think it would be a great opportunity to share some economic empowerment to some of these local contractors. Is this, do you have a plan? And if you don't, willing to assist in any way possible? And I'm sure my colleagues would agree with that as well. So that's my question.
So I mean, to be honest, we don't have a program, but we are cognizant of the, of your subcontractor and vendor base in Harrisburg. And we've obtained a list from your, you were kind enough to share with us, and we are taking that into consideration. So our approach is to bring the work to the community. We've done that wherever we go. We've been in Atlanta, we've got local contractors there that we hired. We went to Houston, we hired local contractors and a local subcontractor base, and we intend to do the same thing in Harrisburg. So we invite.
Say that last part again. Say the last part again, I couldn't hear what you said.
As far as inviting the community.
Okay.
To participate. So there is a, there is a subcontractor base here, minority, non-minority. We bring everybody to the table to help us build this project. So it's not only the city of Harrisburg that's going to benefit, but the overall state of Pennsylvania will get some benefit as well, because a lot of the manufacturing base for the buildings that we are intending to bring to this project is in Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania happens to be one of the central hubs of manufacturing for modular construction.
Yes, and I appreciate that, thinking of Pennsylvania in its entirety. But just remember that I'm just asking, and I'm not saying local either, because that spreads the map out a little bit to York, Lancaster, Central PA. I'm asking about Harrisburg-based contractors, and that's just something I would like to see in my.
And you will see, you will see, I mean, our general contractor is a Harrisburg-based contractor. They worked on the VOPA project as well. They know the site, they know the community. So we've asked them to open it up to the community. So the subcontractor base will come from Harrisburg.
All right, thank you. No further questions. Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. With the unhoused population being prevalent in that same area, would you be against putting maybe an outhouse somewhere on the property or maybe an area where they could come invitingly? Because I can't predict the future, but I can foresee perhaps some instances where they might come and ask, use the restroom, or maybe a meal. So maybe if we could be a bit more, just thinking forward, if you will, maybe somewhere on that beautiful land, maybe just an outhouse, or maybe somewhere they can shower, where it's just away from the rest of the facility, just kind of throwing it out there, possible?
I mean, overall, our focus is on veterans and the success of.
Absolutely. But as you know, our focus is the entire city of Harrisburg.
And I appreciate that.
You're playing ball here.
I appreciate that. However, it is a community that we study quite a bit, and I understand there are folks out there that may need.
Well, right in the same area, that's.
The thing is that we've, we've looked at the property and we've designed the project to make sure that we maintain that privacy and that the veteran deserves.
Maintain the privacy, so would there be like gates to keep people out, or?
There will be perimeter fencing that provides a secure environment for the, for the veteran, similar to any other planned community that you and I may, may move into, where it's, you know, gated, to the extent that we want to maintain that control of that environment.
Absolutely.
These are very sensitive individuals with significant problems. We just talked about PTSD. Others may have some other issues that they're dealing with, psychological issues that they may be dealing with as a result of war. And so it's very sensitive to, and, and bring the general public to a, to a place that intrusive where we allow them to come into that.
Well, just for clarity, not their specific place, I was referring to more of a specific designated place, maybe on the outskirts. Since such great developments going up, it wouldn't be too cost-effective to maybe an addition, but that's just me pieing a sky dreamer.
I mean, there are issues that, that we can think about, you can, we can bring it up with maintenance, maintaining this, the outhouse, which you just mentioned, and that's something that's.
Yep, Dolphin County collaborates with many nonprofits, they have showers on state, they have a lot of different programs, but, you know, no pressure, I just wanted to bring it up. How many veterans can be housed at one time at the facility?
If we're at full occupancy, we're looking at 64 units in the main building. And these are Fisher's apartments, they're single apartments with a kitchenette, full bathroom. And we've got 20 comfort homes, which are specifically granted to the older veteran who's not going to be integrating back into society anytime. These are folks that are either going to live the rest of their lives in, in this particular location.
So that was my next question, not to cut you off, but just to, you know, spare time. So there's no real metric or objective for transitioning? There will be some that just stay there permanently? So there'll be a cap of how many people can be housed?
Yeah, it's the number of units. I mean, that's, that's it. We're, we're looking at 60 permanent units, 64 units in the main building and 20, so you can say there's 84 units.
So there's no transition, no transition for like independent living, for, you know, self-sufficiency or anything like that?
The apartment allows you to be sufficient.
On your property, so I guess for clarity, to their own stability, to be self-sustained? There's no transition plan?
No, you know, this is all permanent housing.
Okay, okay. So once you're 64 at capacity, that would be, you'll turn people away?
Eighty-four. Well, until, until.
Someone.
A tenant decides that I've been here, I think I can do it on my own, and I'm going to move back into the society.
Would that be the vet's decision, or will you guys have a professional saying, hey, you guys met A, B, C, and D, you can transition?
We are, we are not a program or a facility that has a time limit. Come here, you stay as long as you need to.
Okay.
And if it's a month, and you need to maybe gap a situation that you're experiencing at home, or, you know, getting back with your family, that allows you to say, I'm stable now, I don't need this, I appreciate it, somebody else can take advantage of that particular.
Got you. So these are primarily unhoused veterans, these are just veterans dealing with the outside world, having some difficulties, may need a little bit of assistance.
And they need a place to live.
Got you.
They need a home.
Okay, understood. And then for my last question, the transition, maybe realigning the Green Belt to Sycamore, how will that play a toll on Department of Transportation, that small kind of passageway? With customers going in and out, how would that interfere? Or even up to the south side of Harrisburg?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that I will allow the CAGA to discuss as far as the routes that they're looking to, which are viable from our conversations. It's just a matter of them making a final decision on how they're going to do it. It doesn't affect our unit.
Your unit, but I mean like the city itself, because if you know Department of Transportation, PennDOT is used heavily, that Sycamore corridor, and then right there is the CMU building, and then right up the street is the south side of Harrisburg, Hoover Homes, et cetera. So I'm just, you know, there's a school that way. I just, I'm just focused on congestion, potential traffic issues, et cetera.
That's something that we have to discuss with the Green Belt folks. Uh, I mean, that's something that, that we would have to discuss with, uh, 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 the Green Belt folks to be able to give a little bit more, uh, data on that.
Yep.
I mean, as far as our facility is concerned, uh, it doesn't affect.
But that decision is, is due to your facility, so it would be one of the same. So if you can get that to council or those answers from the Green Belt, that'd be absolutely fantastic. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. Um, hopefully I don't have too many questions, sorry if I do, but good evening. Thank you for being here. Um, thank you for, uh, wanting to put this subdivision within the city to help our veterans. Um, they are a population that we treasure and that we do no need, um, some help when they're sometimes left out and forgotten about. Uh, my first question was, um, what will the lighting be like? Um, what will the quality of the lighting be like? And of course, um, how will the security, um, around this subdivision, what will it look like? Cause we do have other members of our community that live within that area and, um, just trying to see how, um, security and lighting will be to protect all of them.
This project is completely, uh, isolated from residential.
Oh, speaking to the mic, so.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
I just want to point out that this project is completely isolated from residential communities. On the, uh, north side, you have the, uh, PennDOT office building over here. You have railroad tracks and Cameron Street, uh, along there. So, uh, uh, and, um, of course, the river over here. So, um, it, it doesn't, it's, I think the nearest residential community is probably, uh, at least a quarter mile away.
No, that's right. I mean, our unhoused population, they live right there, so they are residential community. So they're actually.
Over there, obviously, yeah.
So I think like, and not to, um, do anything that harms them either. And to keep the veterans safe and the unhoused population safe there. I, I definitely would make sure there's a plan to keep both entities safe. Cause there is a very large unhoused population there, so.
So we, this is something that is very important to us. So we've, we've, uh, as part of the planning process, we've got a photometric study to look at lighting levels throughout the community. Cause you can see it creates sort of a meandering, uh, path through our site.
Yes.
So that is a concern to us as well, not only, uh, for our tenants.
Yes.
So that they're able to maneuver through the community and safe, safely. So it's fully lit to the extent that we would experience anywhere else in any other community. Uh, as far as security is concerned, we, we've partnered with a national, uh, security firm that, uh, understands our needs. We've done several projects with them. And so they've developed a scheme for security passive, meaning video, video monitoring throughout the facility to make sure that the entire footprint of the site collects, uh, uh, non-intrusive, maintaining a vi- a vigilance throughout the entire site. So basically, we have a perimeter that's being monitored to make sure that we no have anyone coming into the community that doesn't belong within the, uh, the, the veteran, right? The veteran obviously is free to move, uh, outside the community.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they have, they have to be responsible while living in our community. Uh, so that we have zero tolerance on, on issues of the go outside the facility. They cannot engage in criminal activity. So that's something that's out in the community and they know that they put themselves at risk of being, uh, mo- moved out if they do not follow the rules within the community. Uh, so there are different levels of, of monitoring. From a security perspective, we've got, like I said, the perimeter exterior security. We've got gates that are monitored and are secured with key fogs. There is several, uh, uh, levels of, uh, allowed entry that deals with the administration and obviously the residences. When you get into the building in the actual facility, every, every tenant has their own key to their own, uh, uh, unit. And then the common areas are all monitored internally with the mo- the, uh, multi-story. So we've got several layers of, of security within the facility on the perimeter and interior to the, to the, uh, multi-story building. Single point of entry. So every, every tenant that belongs in that building comes through the front door. Nobody's allowed to come in from any other door other than the front door. That's being monitored by a twenty-four seven security, uh, detail. That's part of the, uh, uh, administration of the, of the building. And that is posted right at the front door. So that front door is constantly closed. You need to have, be able to come in with your own access key that allows you entry. If you come in off the street and you need assistance, we have different levels of security that identify that individual and allows you to get to that front door that eventually lets you into the building to be either admitted or treated. Whatever, whatever, whatever your needs may be, we don't turn anyone away and, uh, and see if we can help.
Okay, thank you for that extensive answer. I do appreciate it. Um, I would just always keep in mind, like I said, the unhoused population that is there and remembering their community within that space. Um, so, but thank you for your answer. Um, my other question was, I noticed in the resolution, it didn't say how many jobs would be created? And, um, so I was wondering what, um, how many jobs will be created from this subdivision?
Are, are we, are we talking construction jobs or are we?
Um, jobs after it is constructed, cause our, our Councilman Jones already touched on.
Permanent jobs, I mean, that is something.
How many, sorry?
Permanent jobs?
Yes.
Uh, in the range, um, I, I would say the range of fifteen to thirty. And of course, we, we, we depend on the volunteer, volunteerism as well. So the community is also welcome to participate. Uh, we, we, a lot, a lot, a lot of people come out and help, whether it be to spend time with the veteran. We have day rooms in the facility that, uh, you can come in and play pool for the day or ping pong or have a meal or, you know. During the holidays, a lot of people come in, so we have the permanent staff and then we also depend on volunteers that come in and help, so it could vary.
Okay, and the, the maintenance would be kept up by some of those permanent jobs that are there? Or is there another step with the maintenance of this subdivision after it goes up? What does that look like?
Well, as far as, as far as our project is concerned, we will have a permanent property manager on site. There will be a program manager that will be dealing with the administrative issues that we just talked about. And there will be case managers on site dealing with individual cases. From a maintenance perspective, that's something that we take on ourselves.
Okay.
Uh, we will have maintenance, uh, services, lawn, uh, lawn mowing, smell removal, uh, you know, ice, de-icing, things of that nature that any other community would have, we take that role on.
Okay.
And we, you know, we will be interviewing, uh, different vendors locally that will be part of the program. For example, when we deal with landscaping, we try to identify local landscapers that can execute the project from the, of this, of this size, of this magnitude. And then with the idea that they can continue once we go into operation to maintain the facility in the long term.
Okay, thank you, that was my net. Oh, I was just going to comment, reaching out to the community. Um, you'll probably hear that a lot on here on city council, but we just, we know that we have.
We need, we need all sorts of services. We're going to need, uh, uh, we buy food, we buy water, we do all kinds of things that any other facility would, uh, would require.
Okay.
Janitorial services, I mean, you name it, repairs, anything that you can possibly think of will be handled from that facility.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I think, I'm sorry for my, all my questions, but my last question would be, how are you going to, um, how will you be going about getting the participants, the veterans who will live here? Are you going through certain services? Is it going out into commuting and s- community and kind of seeing who needs it? Cause not everybody is always signed up in certain programs and not always, everybody doesn't always raise their hand and say, hey, I need help. Um, so just how would you go about?
That is, that is the one question that we struggle with every day. How do we, and we do, we, you know, we work with the VA, we do get referrals. Uh, Volpa is going to become one of our, our, our referral service. And I don't want to say referral services unfortunately, but when they do graduate from that program, which they will, they will, when they find, and I'm su- they've had, they've had cases of, of some of their, uh, veterans saying, okay, I'm ready to go, where, where do I go now? We will be there with our permanent housing facility where they can move into. And there are other, other organizations in the, in, in the communities that we go to that say, hey, I happen to know a veteran that needs help. So I'll bring them to us. We've got, uh, we've made, uh, inroads with, uh, the county in, in Houston where the, uh, county police has a program where they are picking up certain veterans and they don't know what to do, then they bring them to us to help them, uh, find, find homes. And so it, it comes from many different, uh, many different directions. And you're right, the veteran doesn't raise up their hands and says, I'm homeless.
Right.
They, uh, they could be among us and not know it. It takes time and trust for them to step up and say, I need help.
Yes, I completely agree and.
We do have case managers, like I said, and we will do outreach into the community and see where they may be.
Yeah.
Try to get them help.
Yes, I think the outreach part would be great. There are definitely members of our community who are not going to raise their hand and say that they need help, but they do. And I know we have maybe one or two, um, programs that deal with the unhoused population. And of course, some of them are going to be veterans, so reaching out to them, um, would be great too. Um, our daily bread, I know they, that's a soup kitchen, but they also, of course, I know there are veterans that, that go there. And there's another one that it's coming away from me right now, but a program that helps unhoused, um, individuals.
All those folks that are welcome to, uh, contact us and we will have outreach people at the location that will go out into the community and deal and, and speak to some of these other organizations to bring them out of the shadows and say, hey, it's not something to be ashamed of. It's something that we need to handle and, uh, we'll provide that overflow.
All right.
If I may just add, at the, um, plan, planning, one of the planning commission meetings, there were, um, commanders of veterans lodges. And they explained that today, every day, people are coming to them, veterans are coming to them and asking for help. So that's a referral source.
Oh, well, then that's great, yeah, thank you.
They're on the gamut. I mean, it could be recent, uh, uh, veterans that have been discharged, some that have spent some time on their own. Stretching all the way back, you may find a Korean War vet that's still certainly going from home to home. Definitely Vietnam veterans are still out there.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, and that's where the comfort homes come in. So if you're that era where, you know, you've, you're, you're, you're right. I don't, I don't want to say at the end of your life, but you know, you're not becoming, uh, integrated into society. If we can help you, and, uh, we certainly would, but you can come and call this, call your home.
Thank you. And they're just for single veterans, correct?
All our facilities are for single veterans. If, that doesn't mean that we don't help, uh, veterans with families, cause we do. Uh, we have our National Case Management Network and that is another group that we have, uh, at our office that deals with hundreds of veterans across the United States where they may be either geographically distant from a project that we may be developing and it won't be not, will not be going to those, uh, particular facilities or we will not be building a facility where they are. We help them through this network to give them the same support that we will give at, uh, at our sites. But if you have family and you're struggling with your family, you have children, this is not the place for, to bring up family. We will help you place your family in a home that is different than this, with the same level of service that we can cobble together with our network of service providers.
Okay, thank you very much for answering my questions. That's it for me, uh, Councilwoman Daniels.
Uh, President Bowers?
Thank you. My questions were asked and answered. They were around the CAGA Sycamore Street alternate route. So I'm, I'm, Mr. Hill, we should expect to receive some information? Okay, thank you. And then my other question was related to economic development and job creation, which was answered, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green?
Thank you very much. Um, thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, I really look forward to this project, cause I feel like it's something that is very much needed. Uh, a couple of questions. One, is it just for veterans or is it for first responders as well?
Initially, our program is for veterans.
Okay.
We do have other ways that we help first responders through several of other programs. So if you know the first responders that need help, needs assistance, they can certainly contact us and we will put them in contact with the right person to help their needs.
Okay, uh, and then the other question I have is transportation in and out. Will this be like, will there be a bus stop nearby? How will the veterans be able to get in and out? Um, will they do the drive-in? Is it parking for them? Are they expected to use bikes, walk? You know, just some information on their transportation?
All of the above.
Okay.
Some have cars, some have bikes, uh, some like to walk. Uh, some we provide transportation for. So that's part of, if you live in our, in our village, we provide the transportation. You need to get to the VA, you can arrange to be taken to, to the Veterans Administration, Administrative Services. Or, you know, and, and it's ad hoc. So if they need, they need to go to a mall or something, we may make the arrangements to give them the transportation to get them there or to a transport hub where they're able to take public transportation to where their final destination may be. For example, in Atlanta, we have MARTA, which is their local train service. We're about three miles away. We have a bus stop right on the, outside our property. And some need to get down, downtown Atlanta, we'll transport them to the ma- uh, meta-service, MARTA service. And they're able to take their train into, into downtown Atlanta. When they come back, they can either make arrangements to be picked up or they can take, uh, public transportation to their final destination.
All right, thank you very much.
So we'll do the same thing here, right? Depending on what the needs are.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Um, Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. Thank you, Mr. Roseman and everyone else who is here this evening. A lot of my questions have been answered. Um, I'm really excited about this project because in any time we can service our unhoused, whether they're veterans or just, you know, or any unhoused person is a plus. Um, being that I am a veteran myself, this is esp- especially, um, passionate for me. Um, I also served in the United States Army, so I am service-connected. But what I wanted to share is that there are going to be plenty of referral services for you. There is the Lebanon VA Medical Center. We got, have the Vet Center on Second Street. There's the Navy, uh, Yard over in Mechanicsburg. Um, and so there will not be a shortage of any, um, you know, need. There, veterans will be able to use your services and all the other services. There's just not enough services to go around, so this would be an added advantage. So I'm very excited, um, about the prospect of this, um, facility. And when Councilwoman Rawls was asking about the perimeter, I believe, I ride my bike down there on the Green Belt and I did get a chance to go up to the tiny village that's currently there. And there was a boundary and there was a sign there that stated you couldn't, you know, go any further. I was actually turned around by somebody down there. They told me to make a U-turn. Um, so I know with the area and I don't think there are going to be any, uh, trus- trespassers down in that area. So I'm comfortable that the perimeter is, is safe, is secure. Um, and that other people aren't going to be able to just, you know, travel and trespass in that space. No veteran left behind, no veteran turned away. That makes me smile. Um, so, yeah, I think this is a, a good project. Anytime again that we can help someone who is unhoused, whether they're a veteran or not, I'm all for it. So thank you again for coming here and for sharing the information and good luck.
Thanks for your service.
Hmm, thank you.
So we, we look forward to bringing the project to Harrisburg.
Um, so I would like someone from the Green Belt to step up and discuss, uh, the issues. And just to be clear with council, um, initially, there was an agreement between Green Belt and the original owner of the property that the Green Belt thought they had recorded as an easement, but it was not an easement. So the Green Belt doesn't have, um, isn't a third party in, in these proceedings. But, um, if you could, uh, answer some of the questions council members raised, uh, during the questioning, I'd appreciate it. So please state your name and, um, and go ahead.
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Douglas Hill and I'm the president of the Capillary Green Belt Association. I live at seven hundred and nine Green Street here in Harrisburg. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, we, uh, first, as we've said in front of the planning commission, zoning hearing board, we are supportive of Tunnel to Towers, their mission. As we were supportive of Volpa and we anticipate being supportive of Eden Village when they come before you as well. of Tunnel to Towers, their mission, as we were supportive of VOPA and we anticipate being supportive of Eden Village when they come before you as well. And so we don't want anything that we're doing to impede uh, the construction or the provision of the services uh, that they intend to provide. To give you some background, the Green Belt, of course, is a regional asset for the city certainly, but for, for the entirety of the region. Uh, as was noted in the opening comments, uh, we are delineated in the uh, City Comprehensive Plan, we're listed in zoning ordinance. We're in the County Comprehensive Plan, uh, the Tri-County Planning, uh, the HATS Program and, and others as, as an asset for the city. And that's not just a recreational asset, but it's also an environmental asset and it's also a transportation asset. And so that's why that priority has been expressed. As it appears in the zoning ordinance, the very specific phrasing is the, you have an objective for completion of the Green Belt. And why that language is in there is because the Green Belt, which circles the city, low over twenty miles and then some spur routes, uh, is almost entirely uh, the property of the city or some of its other municipal partners. Or if it's private property, we have an easement through there. Uh, the completion language is because there are three properties remaining that are private properties where we have nothing but a permission. So to clarify the comment that you made before, uh, we were never under the, uh, we never expressed the, that we believed we had an easement. All we've had for each of these three properties is a permission. And so it does not rise to the level of an easement, certainly not a right of way. Okay, so uh, we have uh, over the last thirty-plus years, uh, tried to um, negotiate getting those easements uh, you know, with uh, I won't say su- without success, because it, it really wasn't a, a top priority effort because we had the permissions and we just expected that over time, we would have those discussions. What's before you tonight is the Tunnel to Towers property, which uh, lands squarely on the historic route of the Green Belt. And so that occasioned this discussion. Uh, but it was actually preceded by uh, the rerouting or partial rerouting of the Green Belt uh, with the VOPA property. And just to orient you, uh, where we are, this is the entirety of the area. Uh, this is the Tunnel to Towers property right here. Uh, this is Penn Dot, Dauphin County General Authority. VOPA is down here and then this is the potential future site for Eden. Then railroad tracks, Cameron Street, Sycamore Street. With the uh, approval for VOPA and we supported approval of VOPA, uh, we uh, closed the route that used to go through that area and so used, continued to use what we called the shortcut. And by the way, this shows the historic route of the Green Belt. Uh, when that construction then began, uh, fencing was put up, construction fencing to limit access and obviously it's a construction zone, so you can't. So this section of the trail got closed off and we worked with the city to put in place a detour. The detour uh, now comes down to the Penn Dot property, comes back across Sycamore, the whole way out to Cameron Street, then back in at Shannoye and then reconnects over here. And that's, that's the detour uh, that's been in place since the construction began on VOPA and is still in place right now. And until we find an alternate route, is going to continue to be the detour. So with that said, uh, the route that we're looking at and we've, we've, are in, completing an engineering review uh, for feasibility, for cost and uh, to uh, determine whether uh, we're going to be able to get this route in place. This is an older sketch. We have newer sketches, but uh, we're still finalizing a few things, so I didn't have an opportunity to get a blowout for you. But the alternate route that we are looking at, we would come across right in here at the lower end of Front Street, go up Sycamore Street and then one of two alternatives. One would be to loop through the Pennsy property and then connect back down here, or to come up here and go through the Cumulus property, the Cell Tower property and same thing, make the connection. Uh, we're, we're working on, as I say, on the feasibility study. The biggest issue is uh, safety along Sycamore Street. Uh, as you know, all we have right now is a five-foot wide sidewalk and, which is number one, illegal for the cyclist to use, but number two, inadequate for cyclists. And so they are on the roadway. Pedestrians are on the sidewalk and then ultimately they have to cross and follow down Cameron Street. What we're proposing to do is, or what we're studying doing is widening the sidewalk to ten feet. So in popular parlance, putting Sycamore Street on a road diet. Uh, and we are completing the traffic engineering study to see if that's supportable, given the conditions for Sycamore Street as well as the traffic volume out of Penn Dot. Uh, initially, we think that is possible. Uh, initially, we think, we don't think there are gonna be any issues doing that. Uh, it will not, we don't believe it'll slow the traffic appreciably to the extent you have any stack up. It's not because of design of the road, but because of the traffic light it's at Cameron Street. So that's what we're looking at. Uh, the obvious impediments are first, that we are going to have to instead get easements either from the Pennsy property or from this property. Uh, we've not had deep material discussions with the property owners on that, because uh, it's, it's premature uh, until we have the full engineering review and the full uh, traffic study complete. Uh, but what we do know from our engineers is that there will be a price tag attached to this, as there often is. And uh, the total all-in price is probably going to approach three million dollars to get uh, the reroute done. Uh, first phase would be to come through Sycamore Street part. That would be about one point two million and then the remainder would be for whatever connections we're, we're going to need to make through there. Um, we are also uh, in discussions with Dauphin County General Authority because even though the, the permanent reroute of the trail would be proposed up here, we still want to keep this segment open. And there are four particular reasons for that. First, uh, the employees use the trail regularly on breaks and otherwise and then active transportation, people use it to get to Penn Dot. Second, uh, this part of the trail was paved with state funds and so um, needs to stay open for that reason. Third, uh, this makes a connection to where the emergency access road exists and so this needs to be maintained for that purpose. And then last is that uh, we think there will be an opportunity at some point in the future once uh, Tunnel to Towers is fully developed, fully operational, that uh, a gate can go in here and their, their clients can have access to the trail and, and the rest of the city uh, using uh, that spur of the trail. So that's the uh, short version. Now, I mentioned the three million dollars. Uh, you all, I know this, the city has been remarkably supportive of the Green Belt over years, over the years, considers it an asset. And I know individually, you've been supporting and then many of you are users as well. Uh, so we are going to be asking the city for help, uh, not necessarily a three million dollar appropriation, although, you know, if, if you're able to do it, that'd be grant. But more realistically, we know we're going to have to apply for grants. Uh, and uh, our primary partners are gonna be DCD, Penn Dot and DCNR. Uh, we've also are working with the foundation community. We already have received a few smaller grants there. Uh, but it will be a concerted effort and as you are aware, for a nonprofit seeking state grants, uh, we are typically required to get uh, support and sponsorship of the host municipality. And so we'll be talking to you about that as each of, each phase uh, is developed. The, we expect to have our final engineering report within a week or so. Uh, we will be happy to share that uh, with council and however you'd like. And we'd be happy to meet with you individually or as a group, uh, to get you more detail. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Okay, now just um, open, just if anyone has a question, just shout it out.
Yeah, um, so you said um, two things. Sycamore, when you're talking about five, five, would you say five to ten?
Right.
That's the sidewalk, you wanna expand the sidewalk, which would take away from Sycamore Street.
That's correct.
Uh, okay. And then secondly, you just um, talking about um, coming to council about um, funding. And we just heard the gentleman say that funding is there. Is this separate from what they're doing? Because he said that the funding was there, that he won't ask the city for anything.
So we, we have no direct relationship with Tunnel to Towers. We're, we are not.
I know, I know who you are, I'm just saying it. So there's no, I mean, you guys seem to be working together on this project and you seem to be in uh, favor of this project. But when it comes to the Green Belt and uh, so I guess that wouldn't, they're not supporting you financially with that or?
We, we are having discussions. Uh, we, we've had a couple of meetings now with their, with uh, this team in the corporate office. Uh, I can't make a representation on uh, what they're willing to uh, donate to us to help with the project. They said that that is under consideration. And in, in the interim, uh, they will lend letters of support to whatever grant applications that uh,
Yeah, got you. And um, just my concern about shortening that Sycamore Road, because there is a lot of traffic that goes through there, it's trucks and everything going to, to Penn Dot. You know, hopefully that you can get that easement through the, the Pennsy Supply uh, uh, property and hopefully wouldn't have to shorten that Sycamore Road.
Thank you. Yes, and that's, that's our preferred route as well, is to come this way, because no crossing would be required. If we have to locate here, we will have to have uh, crossing it on, in Sycamore just before the overhead railroad bridge.
And I, I had one, um, just to ask as well. Uh, are the veterans in the project primarily from Harrisburg or are they from anywhere in the US?
Um, they're from the area.
But if they're in Pennsylvania, they, so there may be some veterans that are living somewhere.
So I guess specifically, because initially we were proposed that it would be totally covered financially. So if you come back to us and ask for the tax-paying citizens of Harrisburg's finances towards it, that kinda changes the conversation.
So I think we need to separate out the entities. Um, the, this is the, the facility, these are the applicants for the project. Uh, and this is the Green Belt and they're two separate entities. So the Green Belt doesn't have any standing because they're, they have no property interest. Um, but it's something that uh, many people asked about to uh, to, to enlighten the conversation a little bit more. So I just wanted to make that clear on the record, right? This is, so the full funding is for that project there, not anything else.
Well, uh, just in my opinion, I see it as one project and them working in collaboration to make the project come forward.
Yeah, the thing is, it, the application is them submitting the application for a land development plan. For, so none of that property is.
So what portion of this would have to come back in front of council without asking for an allocation? Is that the only thing that has to come back in front of us?
Well, as, so as of right, the way I'm hearing, if I'm summarizing this correctly, there is, for practical purposes, no plan for the Green Belt. Until the Green Belt figures out what they're going to do and then seeks the permissions for whatever plan they develop.
And what I'm saying is a council member representing the residents of Harrisburg, it could be fiscally irresponsible to approve their project without his project totally thought through, because it will in return hurt our residents.
So councilman, we, there, there's been a lot of discussion on this and, and I think people have to look at it just with a, with a cold, clear eye. Because this property involved three different entities that are private, on private, next to two separate public entities that aren't us. And then we move into other private property for the relocation. Those are all separate sort of detailed negotiations. And until all the dust settles, like, for, for these projects, to anyone commit, they know exactly where this reroute was gonna go. I think the commitment that everyone seems to have is the Green Belt will continue on a route that makes the most sense financially, safety-wise. But I don't think anyone could pretend they know.
I'm not talking about really knowing. What I'm saying is there's support financially for the Green Belt's portion as well.
Yeah, I said, they're, they're putting, they're putting a private piece on a private property.
Right, right.
So I don't think there is a financial support for.
But that's what I'm suggesting or proposing.
I, I understand.
Okay.
But not knowing where.
I understand completely.
Not going where it's gonna be, so not knowing what it's gonna cost. That's, that's the, that's.
And I'll be the one to say it. If I have to be the bad guy, that's fine. I just wanna make sure we're getting the most out of it if there's gonna be an allocation coming down.
And if I, if I can address the point as well, uh, we have not asked them specifically for an amount of money. We are, we will welcome whatever they are willing to contribute. Uh, but uh, we recognize the Green Belt is a separate entity.
Absolutely.
Uh, and we don't know way under Pennsylvania law to make this a condition of that.
I agree totally. I just, I just know throughout the course of the years I've been on council, we've heard similar things and when it comes to the residents, they're continuously getting turned away. So I just wanna go to bat for them consistently, that's all. Thank you.
Any other Green Belt-related questions?
Yeah, a- again, you know, I think what Councilman Rodriguez was asking, um, when it comes to rerouting uh, the Green Belt, especially, you know, my concern is about Sycamore shortening that street. I just think that is something that we should not do. Um, but um, in that approving this project, and then you have to continue to make those decisions around the Green Belt area. Well, say we, cause we, it's obvious we want this project to move forward. But then if you have these other concerns around rerouting that Green Belt, how does this, look, does this come back in front of us? Hey, we need to, we definitely need to shorten Sycamore Street. And, and if so, you know, I think that's something we, we should think about um, beforehand. If, if, that's, I think that's the gist of what he's asking.
Said, I don't, said, this is one land development application for this one property, for this particular construction. Um, I don't know that there's a basis to hold up deciding on this based on what could theoretically happen.
I'm ju- I'm just saying again, once you approve this project, right? Then the Green Belt's gonna have its issue about where it needs to be rerouted. Again, I'm just strictly saying for Sycamore Street, I just don't think that is the route. And I don't, I don't think we should hold up the project because of it, but I, I, I do have a concern asking, will that come back in front of us? If that's the case that they feel that they need to shorten the Sycamore Street.
So I think it depends on what they do, because, I mean, no offense, but it sounds, it sounds like there's nothing that's firm.
Firm, that's right.
They could theoretically work around a ton of private properties and have nothing to do with us.
I think what.
Or they could deal with the state and not have anything to do with us.
I think what was just trying to be said was, why couldn't you have a complete plan with what you were gonna do? That was it, like, more thought out of, this is exactly, we wanna do this, how it looks. But I understand they're two different projects. Definitely don't wanna hold this project up. It's a great project, I totally support it. It's just like, oh, I wish we had a, a better, you had a better plan of how you were gonna maneuver the new passageways and the trails to that nature, instead of some maybes. That's it.
Well, and I, forgive me, I, I have to call it a maybe, because I don't have the final. But we have good detailed drawings, we have good detail from our engineers. We expect to have our final report within the next week or so. And I think it will address all of your concerns. I don't believe there are any council approvals that we're going to need to seek. Uh, we have talked with the city engineer, we've walked the site with the city engineer. Uh, and uh, he doesn't see any initial reservations. Obviously, he's not reviewed the final plan either. Uh, but uh, we're, we're trying to check all those boxes to make sure of viability before we say yes, this is it, this is our final choice.
It just, it just feels like CAGA's like singled out and I don't kinda like favor that. I think you guys should be included in everything and not kinda be left to just string it along and freestyle it. Um, but we're in heavy support of the program. We just thought maybe more descriptive, more detailed, kinda give us that foresight to see it all the way through. That's all.
Yeah, they, we, we.
Maybe, maybe pitching it separately would have helped or, I'm, I'm just giving you my.
I think the original issue was that the Green Belt thought they had a relationship earlier that they didn't have. And then when these construction projects came on, the Green Belt didn't have property interest that they thought they had. And that's, that's the background for the issue.
But, but there, there would be.
And they currently don't have any property interest where they're trying to reroute. They're trying to negotiate those property interests.
And, and there would be no reason for us to ask them to do the redesign work. The, the responsibility for design of the trail rests with the association in cooperation with the city. So it is a completely separate set of design work.
I understand it. I'm not approving one project. You know, a lot of issues to deal with on that.
I think in all reality, before you're done, before this is done, there'll be things back in front of the council.
Okay, that was, that was one of the main questions. That was the main question.
Whether there're grant application approvals, whether there are, because somehow city property is involved and needs to get an easement. But, but, but until you're really there, you're not there. But I think DCNR is offered to be of assistance.
Same thing with the project itself, though.
Right, I'm saying, so you'll get things in front of you related to the Green Belt as it reconfigures, right? Because it's, it's just a long-term part of the city's.
But in a nutshell, thank you, Neil. That was the question. Will it have to come back to us in front of certain things? If we just approve it, is that eight, eight six?
Well, they will be approved. This, the, this group, Tunnel to Towers will be approved. Unless something, when they're doing construction changes and it changes something, that they have to come back. I don't, I don't foresee that happening. But once in a while, you'll see a project back in front of you. So that project will be done. The next project, Eden Village, if it goes through, will be back in front of you, which is the middle project of the three.
Absolutely.
When all those three things are done, it's much easier. When all those three things are done, it's much easier to see what, where, where everything is, what's available. Right? And, and we still have PennDOT and Dauphin County to speak to. And, you know, it's just a thing where people have to work together, uh, to preserve this. And I think everyone's grown up and that, that can happen.
Thank you. I'd like us to get back to the bill at hand. Thank you for your presentation. I do have some follow-up questions. So this property has been represented as a, both transitional and temporary, permanent and temporary housing. It's not permanent?
This is permanent housing.
So there's no temporary, but I thought you said if someone just needed to.
If you decided you wanted to move somewhere else, it's not any different than if you lived in one community, you decided to move to the next. Uh, we don't necessarily say it's a transitional building. We just made a move to a different place. In this case, we want you to move out, but you can stay. You can stay as long as you need to as a permanent resident.
So, sorry, so what's the property interest that the people who are living there, what will they have? Will they be tenants? Will they have life estates?
They are tenants. They are tenants.
Okay, and then, um, I imagine there are conditions under which they may no longer be allowed to participate. What are those conditions?
The only condition is if, you know, they, they commit a crime or, you know, they, they, they fail to follow policy. Because there are all rules that they will have to live under as far as being a, a resident of the, of the building. Like any other building, you need to follow certain rules. And this is part of the, of the, of the program to rehabilitate. You're paying rent, you have skin in the aim, this unit is yours, you have ownership as long as you're paying rent. This is yours, you need to maintain it, has to be in good condition. You're able to use the facilities at no cost other than what you're paying in rent. So there is some attachment to the community that they've invested their, 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 their funds in to live in. Now they decide that, you know, I've bettered myself and I'm able to buy a house out in, in the community, then technically they can move out.
Could you tell us, how much are they expected to contribute towards their rent?
Uh, no more than thirty percent of their income, whatever that may be.
Um, and then what about visitors? Because you talked about the entrance and having to have access. So how do, how are visitors allowed to?
Visitors are allowed to come to, to the building to visit their friends. I mean, that's something that, uh, we, you know, we dealt with. Because we know that they, they, they have, there's a brotherhood that exists among veterans and, you know, they, they support each other. They come and visit each other.
Right, but so how do they come in and out of the building?
They, they need to be announced. Yes, you, you, you're able to bring a veteran in. You have to report, you have to let them, let the facility know that your friend is in the building and then they're able to uh, enjoy the facility with their friend while, while they are together in the facility. There will be at the gate, yes. You will be able to communicate.
Okay, um, and then, um, Mr. Knight, do you mind just refreshing my memory? Do we have, does the city have property along, like, uh, beneath the, the road, beneath the roadway?
Uh, are you asking whether their access road is a public right of way?
Yeah.
It is not. Everything south, um, and including the PennDOT facility is all private land.
Okay, okay, so we have.
It's private property, right?
Okay, um, and I think yeah, that's, those are my questions. Does anyone have any outstanding questions?
Just a statement, you said thirty percent because the federal mandate of thirty-one percent and over, they'll be economically disadvantaged. Is that why thirty percent is the, no more than thirty percent?
I'm not able to speak to specific how we ended up with thirty percent.
Just keep in mind, like, our thirty percent may be different than the county's. Just kind of keep that in mind when pricing goes.
Thirty percent of their income.
Yes, the AMI, yes, but a, so, I understand completely, Madam Chair, thank you. AMI income for Harrisburg is different than Dauphin County's. I'm just trying to have them to keep in mind on that.
Thirty percent of the tenants' income.
Yep, yep.
Right?
The, the average income.
Yeah, AMI, that's their median income, yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, thirty percent of the income, so once they pay their, uh, rent, then all the utilities are included and everything into that. Okay, that's good. Okay, thank you.
Uh, and if you don't mind sharing with us the policies, uh, for participating and being excluded from the project, I would appreciate that before the next.
Dishonorably discharged is something that.
If you could just email it to us, if you could email us those policies, that would be great. Okay, any other, uh, okay. Um, so I'd go ahead and recommend that we add this to the next legislative session. And that concludes the business of this committee.
I have a question if I may.
Sure.
Uh, more directly to the solicitor, uh, if the resolution has, uh, written, uh, some conditions have changed and particularly the, uh, relocation of the green belt, uh, has changed. I suggested some revisions to the, uh, resolution. Can those be incorporated?
I would have to discuss that with the council members separately. Um, at, at this moment, this document belongs to the council, the city of Harrisburg. It's a publicly introduced document. Um, amendments to it come from the council's determinations. Happy to have that discussion. I do think if there are issues you have with language, we, we frankly ought to have that as a public discussion. That's what the purpose of the council is.
Can we do that this evening?
I, I would say you, you should do that this evening, uh, because you're asking the council to, to refer this on for a vote. Like any other land development plan, if the applicant has an issue with what's recommended, the applicant and the council need to resolve that right here, whether the applicant can meet those conditions or whether the applicant, uh, objects to those conditions. So I think you need to raise those now.
If I may, then may I, uh, have the, uh, clerk distribute, um, my proposal.
Madam President, before we do so, do we have to reopen the committee business since it was concluded?
I didn't acknowledge because he was acknowledged with the question, so we haven't moved forward with our meeting agenda. So we're fine to proceed with additional discussion.
Thank you.
By way of explanation, the primary reason for the suggested revisions is because various things changed between the time this resolution was originally written, uh, and present. For instance, the original resolution, um, said that, uh, comments had not been received from the Dauphin County Planning Commission nor the, um, uh, Capital Region Water Authority. And, uh, comments, uh, were received subsequently from both of those. And, um, the applicant has, uh, engineer has had conversations with them and will comply with those applicable comments. Uh, that was one reason for the suggestion. And the other was primarily because of the green belt issue. The planning commission had made the fourth condition that the, uh, green belt be relocated on the, uh, applicant's property. And of course, uh, first of all, requiring that is unlawful under Pennsylvania law and the Pennsylvania constitution. Because, uh, it's private property and it would be considered a taking of private property from one private person to give it to another, the capital area green belt. Uh, but more importantly, the green belt is, uh, working on relocating entirely. So, uh, we feel that that condition is, uh, inappropriate. Those are the only, uh, reasons for the proposed revision, uh, to the resolution. The applicant will comply with the first three conditions that the planning commission suggested and they've already incorporated them into the preliminary final land development plan that you have received. So it's just a, a time difference really in the, uh, conditions around the drafting of the resolution.
So, Madam President, if I may, we need to break these into two different things. First, I, I, Mr. Grossman, with all due respect, most of these are semantic and don't really matter. Uh, it has to do with the time that the document was drafted, not it being accurate to, to those conditions. Because those reviews simply are part of your other side of getting the land development plan signed. Like, like they're conditions to get a CRW review. It's a checkbox at the end of the day. So the box happened to be checked after the planning commission, before you got to a plan to be signed. So, and this is routine. It happens all the time. If there's no comment, it doesn't mean a comment doesn't come. It only becomes an issue if the comment comes back that they find the plan doesn't work for whatever reason, stormwater management or whatever. The real issue is the last one you referenced, which is the condition related to, on page three, which is the fourth recommendation of the planning commission to the Harrisburg City Council. The project shall, should accommodate a relocated capital area green belt connection along the property's southern boundary, connecting the railroad bridge to the emergency access road. That is, I mean, a stated recommended condition is, it is, I would suggest to you different than what you heard tonight, I think, from everybody. Because I think they've been working, trying to resolve that issue for months. You know, there have been multiple meetings over it. I would agree that if that condition is unacceptable with the applicant, which I think he, he is, is, the count, their counsel is indicating, that decision needs to be made by the council whether that stays in there or whether a modified rewritten condition, which you've done before, happens or it's simply stricken, right? So that's a, and you do that before. You've added conditions, you've modified conditions, you've stricken conditions. Based on your own judgment, based on the presentations that have been made to the council. But I believe that those are the, that's the material question and I believe what the green belt has presented tonight, what the applicant has presented tonight, says they're looking to do something other than be on the southern border of this property.
So my question would be, and this is the reason why we were asking the questions in a way that, at least for myself, that the way I was asking those questions about, especially when we look at the proposed changes or amendments to this, um, resolution. So the question I would ask, if, if this project wasn't in existence, would we be talking about rerouting the green belt?
It's my understanding, yes, because when we approved the first project, which is already built now, the tiny, which is.
Okay.
A gate went up.
Okay.
Right? And it's.
So it restricted some.
Where, where some activity is. There's another project coming where it's in the middle of two, these two projects. And the green belt has on the pass been rerouted before. It used to go, I think, through what was the Dauphin County, I want to say for, for, for the, the Meadows or whatever the name of the home was there. It had to be relocated when construction happened there. I mean, it's been around a long time and as conditions change.
And I see that. I understand that we're, especially if we're moving into a new space and into a new era, some things are going to have to change. And I, and I completely understand that.
Right, and I, so I, so, you know, from the law bureau's recommendation, it would be to simply strike the third provision from based on what's been represented, I mean, the fourth provision, what's been recommended. Which is the project, uh, should accommodate a relocated green belt connection along the property's southern boundary.
And leave it at it as it's.
No, no, strike that sentence out because, uh, because that creates the question about whether it is going onto private property by the government telling you to for another, for a different entity. And because, but, and, and we would defend that decision if the council says they want to keep it there. My, but my point is I believe the factual representation tonight by the green belt is they're looking at a different path anyway to address their problem.
And just from my understanding, my clarification, this, this will not, like, has nothing to do with, uh, what do they call it? Eminent domain, this won't affect any of that.
Well, the, what, what council is representing to you, Mr. Grossman, is that if we left it there, they would consider that eminent domain, a taking uh, that's not voluntary of part of their property rights by the government for which just compensation would be due. That is what eminent domain means. I'm not saying that the city solicitor's office agrees with that. I'm saying that their council has represented that, uh, to both myself and to the council and to the planning commission.
So, so I guess my question would be, why give us like a new resolution with just handwritten strikeouts and not just respect as a council and?
No, this is not me. This is their.
Not you, I was speaking to.
They cannot rewrite your resolution.
Correct, but that's the attempt.
No, they're, I think they're, they're making proposed changes. They're asking whether we would incorporate proposed changes. I, I'm saying the one that matters and the only one that matters from the city of Harrisburg's operations is the one that actually isn't marked, which is on page three, paragraph four, the first paragraph four. That is the issue in dispute. You know, whether or not this resolution mandates that the southern border of this property be used for the green belt.
I understand what you're saying, but then I have questions as well, like why would CRW cross out, so on and so forth.
Maybe any, if anyone wants an amendment, just email them to me and we can present them at the legislative session.
I think that's a fair res- resolution.
We could do that, yeah. So does everyone think a week is enough to think about those amendments or would you like, uh, to move it two weeks?
Well, for me, I think that's plenty of time. I, I can't speak for colleagues, the rest of our colleagues.
Okay, so folks could send me your proposed amendments and we'll read them at the next legislative session.
And, and just pending what they are, we would, we would historically then invite, um, both, uh, Mr. Knight and the applicant to speak about their observation of those amendments and how they see it affecting what their work is. We should suspend the rules and we'll do that at that next session.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so I think this concludes the business for the Community and Economic Development Committee for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final committee business this evening is with the Public Safety Committee. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones, to lead discussion.
Thank you. Um, we have Mr. Flood, formerly of Ceasefire PA. Uh, Mr. Truesdale, can you read Bill Six of twenty twenty-four into the record?
Bill Six, twenty twenty-four, An Ordinance Amending Title Three of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, known as the Public Safety Code at Part Three, General Offenses, by adding thereto, Section Three Seventy-Five entitled Unlawful Manufacturing of Firearms, to prohibit the use of three-dimensional printers for the manufacture of firearms, the transfer, use, or conversion of unfinished firearms and certain equipment, and prescribe penalties for violation thereof.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Flood, can you, uh, introduce yourself and, um, give a a review of, of this ordinance and, and a short explanation if you need any in-depth explanations. I'm sure my colleagues will have questions.
Yeah, sure. Um, so as you mentioned, I came in front of this council in my previous capacity with Ceasefire PA. I'm now coming in front of you as, uh, Brandon Flood, advocacy and engagement. So independently lobbying this and more importantly, the reason why I'm coming back in front of you is because I've, I actually believe in this ideal beyond what, you know, organizationally at the time when I was with the, um, with the ceasefire, especially as a gun owner uh, who owns several firearms as well as a so-called assault rifle. This is something that I think is, is sound policy. Certainly I understand that, uh, in my conversations with some of the members as well as the solicitor, in a perfect world, we want for this, we want for this policy to have more teeth. But I'm a, I'm a proponent of, I mean, you put your laptop down, but doing all you can as a council, right? To, to be able to address this issue. And for me, I think, uh, this gives us an opportunity. While we may not be able to be super proactive, uh, there are elements in this city, uh, especially people, you know, I talked with, uh, Councilman Jones about people that know that this manufacturing is happening, that know that these firearm, these unfinished firearm build kits are being purchased and resold without background checks. So, uh, uh, there's some degree that we can be proactive, uh, but admittedly, we, we are going to be a little bit reactive. But I also think there's an opportunity to provide, uh, an educational, uh, component here too, especially with our school districts. Uh, we have a new superintendent who wants to do stuff around, uh, firearm safety, educating students as well as parents about safe storage. Obviously, we have a GBI program up here as well as a coordinator, GBI coordinator that they're looking to fill. As well as the CSAs. I know you guys love the community service aides. You know, being able to put, put them to work and have them carry the water for you, right? So there's some stuff you guys can do from a policy standpoint and then from an educational and out, education and outreach standpoint to, uh, educate parents about what to look for when they see these kits that oftentimes look as if they're replicas or toy firearms. So, you know, since the time, so I've explained to you the, the legal basis, um, that allows you guys to do that. Since that time, this is my original time, uh, the city of Reading, uh, successfully lobbied them to enact such an ordinance, so your. them to enact such an ordinance, so York and the City of Reading have acted on it. From a judicial standpoint, the US Supreme Court, October eighth, had oral arguments, Garland versus Vanderstock, to take up this very question of whether or not, well, take up the Biden rules question about, number one, do these kits constitute a firearm, and then secondarily, whether the ATF had the authority to regulate them as such. So from just some of the arguments that I've heard, and, you know, obviously, some of the opinions that have been submitted to the court, not just from anti-gun folks, but from police officers and prosecutors, I think I'm very confident that the courts will at least provide some guidance to both Congress and the states to put some guardrails up. So again, this gives you guys an opportunity to be proactive, especially while we're in this nebulous state, so to speak, where technically, these guns, these kits are, you know, there's no regulation, regulation. So I think, you know, nothing really has changed since on a judicial front, other than there's been oral arguments. Obviously, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court has not yet taken up this issue. But again, this is, this is meant to serve as a stopgap measure. This is not to be a fantasy. And again, to go back to, you know, one of my favorite coun, I know I love all you guys on council, but to use the tagline of my, the Councilman Rodriguez, let's do all you can to address this issue. So I'll pause there, and if you guys have any questions or have any feedback about anything, happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flood.
Well, one other thing, too. Since that time as well, your oral reading has not been sued as well. Again, I think, especially as a gun owner, you would still preserve your right to be able, if you can lawfully own a firearm, to exercise your right as a, to make privately-made firearms, you know, as well as to be able to purchase these kits, again, so long as, when we're talking in the context of the city limits, that you are legally, you're not a prohibited person. So again, I'm speaking, I said that to you guys as deputy director, I'm saying that to you guys as a proud gun owner and a person that exercises their Second Amendment right.
Thank you. It's good to know. I think we have a pretty feisty legal representation that'll be ready.
You know, you guys have been deliberate on it, too. But, you know, we wondered to see how things have shaped up. You know, another part, too, is the state, and I said this to Reading, maybe not so much the US Supreme Court, but certainly the PA Supreme, well, they, I'm going to say that the US Supreme Court, too. They're looking at these different voices that are weighing in, outside of the Justice Department and the pro-gun lobby, the people that are on the ground and that see the violence and see the havoc that's being wreaked in those neighborhoods, whether they be law enforcement, whether they be neighbors and residents, these folks are weighing in. So, you know, I think you guys are, have some influence, too, at least, I would say more so, when it comes to the PA Supreme Court, about what, how they should be viewing this, and ultimately, what guidance they should be giving the legislature.
Right. So I don't have many questions, just for some clarification, of, obviously, you know, I'm definitely in support of this bill. And so one of the questions, some of the language that's inside of this ordinance, or amending ordinance, you know, does this ordinance cover the devices such as switches?
No.
Are it, okay, hold on. Does it, it doesn't cover that? And can you also explain for our residents and people viewing, and maybe some of my colleagues, what a jig is?
Yeah. So to answer your question, no, this does not include a switch or auto sear. That is a separate policy. You might see me come back in front of y'all, you know, but right now, let's tackle one thing at a time. City of Philadelphia, they actually followed up on their initial ordinance addressing 3D firearms and ghost guns, and have enacted such an ordinance. I'm not here for that. In terms of the jig, the jig is the piece that keeps all of those, the components of the firearm, the main parts together, right? That's the, that's the device that keeps that, that main, the main pieces that actually constitutes the gun and be able to discharge the firearm. So that's a piece of, that comes with a kit.
Okay, and last thing, with this ordinance, it, people, it does not restrict them to actually utilize a 3D printing machine to do thing, to do these things unless, I mean, if they don't have the FFL, which is the federal firearm licensing, and can you explain a little bit about that?
Yeah, I mean, this ordinance is really meant to go after people that are prohibited persons, just to make it simple for you, right? So if, again, the, I can't make it any more simpler than, if you are not a prohibited person, you can use a 3D printer to print a firearm or firearm pieces. This ordinance is really meant to narrowly focus on those that are prohibited persons. So you still would have the ability to do so, that would not be restricted. Again, if you can pass a background check, you can obtain the FFL.
Thank you. I have no further questions, and I will open it up to my colleagues. I will start to my immediate right, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Thank you, Mr. Flood, for being here this evening. Would it be, I guess, premature to ask if maybe, for those individuals that can't legally obtain a firearm, to maybe add anything by postage to supplement that rig or that jig? Maybe if they buy supplemental parts from Google or anywhere else, that could be included in, or maybe perhaps amend the resolution to include that?
No, I mean, you can pervert any device, or, you know, for those of you old enough to remember the show MacGyver, right? You can, you can finagle things to be able to serve as a makeshift device, right? So, you know, I would, I would simplify and leave it limited to the jig. At the end of the day, if people are perverting the use of certain devices to be able to get around it, then, you know, maybe that's something, something to address at a later date and time, but I would focus on the specific piece that is designated and prescribed to do what it's supposed to do. That jig is very, it's very clear as to what its purpose and functionality is.
Yep, totally agree. Do you see one day, perhaps, the manufacturing's being held a little bit more accountable for it? I know, I know it's a tire.
Well, maybe not financially, but this is part of what, you know, this is part of what even the suit began with, you know, accountability doesn't necessarily mean that, hey, there has to be some compensation, but hey, listen, we need better regulation, right? And again, this kind of goes back to your, originally, you know, even the gun that was used, it's coming, like mail-order firearms, right? The gun that actually was used to kill, was it JFK? Yeah, the killer in JFK, the assassin in that case, purchased a firearm through the mail. There's no longer mail order firearms. This is almost akin to that, right? So unfortunately, were you, when these were originally manufactured and sold, quite possibly, there were gun aficionados and enthusiasts that were using it for the right purposes, right? But, you know, with everything, when people learn that there's a gray area or a loophole, those folks that are looking to use these weapons or use these kits for nefarious reasons, this is what they're looking towards, right? And then this, you know, and all the discussion that's been had in the public domain, if you didn't know about how to get a firearm without undergoing a background check, you know now, right? So we have to respond to that and be agile in our response to that.
I have no more questions, and actually, our community gun safety class is tomorrow. I'll send you an invite if you're available.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Flood, for being here. This is, of course, a no-brainer, it's something we need, it's us being, to me, proactive. And I might have missed it, so my apologies if I'm asking a question that's in the resolution, but I didn't see it. What do the penalties look like for someone who does violate this bill?
Well, I mean, the, the issue is, is that you guys are only limited in what you can do. Can you really create any new offenses, you know, and you're limited in what you can do in terms of the grading? So this would be strictly, this would be fine-based.
You know how much? Because I could have missed it, and I'm sorry.
I believe the original version had 300 per offense, and you can actually separate them, too. So if, you know, if you had, if you had multiple violations with a singular incident, as opposed to just being fined $300 for each, each violation, even if it was a singular episode, you can be fined $300 for each one. So, I mean, it's meant to be, obviously, a financial, to discourage folks from a financial standpoint, just because statutorily, we can't, we can't impose anything beyond that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Or you guys can, rather.
Yeah. Thank you, that was all my questions.
And Chair Ross, it's also beneficial to know that, you know, when we were looking at this, I was in conversation with our DA, and he was looking for something like this to be sure that we can actually enforce, and he will be able to prosecute when it comes to things of this nature. So I think that's something that's going to be good for this as well, Neil.
So for the issue of penalty, the city code already has a generalized penalty provision. The discretion on the actual amount goes to the district justice or judge entering the penalty, not the officer. And so we've adopted what's in the optional third-class city code, which is $50 to $1,000, with the discretion being with the judge. And so, and many of our things do that. So we simply incorporated that provision of our code into this ordinance.
Thank you so much.
And I would say that, too. And whenever it comes to fines, you know, especially depending upon how progressive your politics are, right? We have a lot of people that say, hey, no, this is contributing, this is going to contribute to mass incarceration, or, no, this is going to, in some way, shape, or form, have folks from a, from a monetary, a debtor's prison, right, so to speak. So, you know, part of having that flexibility and that judicial discretion is to look at the circumstances, right? Because sometimes, you know, due to sheer ignorance or whatnot, so being able to have that discretion to where you see something that's very egregious, or someone is expressly looking to flip these guns, so to speak, you can bring the hammer down, as opposed to maybe someone that just, due to sheer absent-mindedness, or just the lack of understanding how the law, or maybe, you know, we got a lot of transplants to come here, right? So, you know, that's, that's particularly beneficial. So for those of you that may have any qualms about debtor's prisons or mass incarceration, especially as someone who also does advocacy on the reentry side, I support that.
So the code does also provide up to 90 days in Dauphin County prison per violation. Frankly, so does our housing code. Our DJs are not really inclined to put people in prison for ordinance violations. That's not been their history, but it's there as your general exercise of authority given by the Commonwealth.
Yes, and again, that's where our DA comes in to be able to talk with the president and judge, and work with our district justices in this regard.
Well, just to add to that, too, I mean, it should be noted that even though he didn't provide anything in black and white, our DA, Fran Chardo, supports both the bill on the House level to address ghost guns, and the fact that they are so readily accessible. So as a concept, he is supportive, and usually when I have to, especially when it comes to, like, cannabis and other things. He's quick to tell me whether or not, hey, this isn't something where it should be maybe a county-wide initiative. That wasn't the respond, we received this go-around. The DA's association was actually supportive of the state bill, even though it's a little bit different than this bill, but it addresses the same issue.
Thank you. President Bowers.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, just wanted to refresh everyone's memory. The last time Mr. Flood was before us was in April. It was at the end of April during our policy work session, where we discussed more statistics and how other cities across the Commonwealth could potentially benefit from this type of legislation. So I am supportive. This is something we've been working on for a while, so here we are, and I'm hopeful that we can get it across the finish line. Thank you.
I have faith in you guys.
Thank you, President Bowers. Vice President Green.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here, Mr. Flood. I don't really have many questions. I think this is a step in the right direction, it's something that we need. As always, I wonder about enforcement, right? How exactly do we enforce it? That's always the hardest part, but at least we're putting our skin in the game and moving in the right direction, so definitely support this.
Yeah, and again, when it comes to enforcement, again, in a perfect world, I mean, we talk, we can talk about that law, you know, at least in the, when it comes to public safety, generally, you know, there's some people that make the argument that there's enough laws on the books, there's just not enough resources for enforcement. You know, so yeah, again, we're doing what we can with what we're legally allowed to do, and hopefully be able to, again, influence not only the courts, but even, you know, the folks over across the street at the, in the legislature, too, especially when you guys are making it very clear to them that this is a problem, and again, we're going to exhaust, you know, the remedies that we can put forth as a local governing body. But yeah, you know, we acknowledge that, and I think there's certainly instances where, you know, I think where people are being prosecuted for other crimes that are willing to give up Tony and Johnny and Ronnie and Bobby, and let you know, hey, these are practices that they're already engaged in, or here's, you know, so, yeah, you know, we're limiting what we, you guys are limiting what you can do, but again, you're doing all you can. I should get a check.
Hey, man, you would have to. Are you, are you good, Vice President Green? You good?
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Thank you, Mr. Flood, for your work. This is self-explanatory, I'm in favor of it. But one question, you said this focuses on prohibited persons. Who are the prohibited persons? People who?
Anyone that cannot get a, obtain a concealed carry permit through the sheriff's office or otherwise, I mean, it doesn't have, even have to be because of a criminal conviction, mental illness. So if you can't, if you can't, then this goes back to the language as the federal firearms license. If you're not able to obtain that, you're not able to obtain a concealed carry permit, and thus are a prohibited person. So that's who that would apply to.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Daniels. Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or anything else? Okay.
I just wanted to say one thing, and this is more towards the youth that are watching or that may hear about this from their grandmother or auntie. It's one thing to feel as though you have courage with a firearm, but especially when we're talking about these 3D printed guns, ghost guns, you're not even sure if the gun's put together completely, and you go out in the community and, you know, cause whatever ruckus you want to cause, it could potentially cause a fatality on yourself. So, you know, responsible gun ownership, but correct, and lawful gun ownership, definitely. So those are the only sentiments I wanted to make. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, just to reiterate, too, you know, from an educational standpoint, we know we, you have a lot of parents, whether it's single family or just both parents are working, and a lot of kids have a lot of idle time, or there's not as much supervision as you would like, you know, being able, even if it is a brochure or a document where you're getting that information, also people, parents know what to look for, or if they encounter one, what, you know, once they recover it, who they can, you know, contact, you know, things like that that are helpful, right? You know, you guys can't do everything to address the gun violence issue, but again, you can do your part and be able to empower parents and guardians to be able to do their own part, too. Because that's one of the things you often hear, is that, well, the parents need to do something about it. So let's give the parents, let's empower them to the extent that we can, to at least be able to address this specific issue.
Do they have, like, pamphlets or literature, that as far as, like, council, we can keep in the lobby and, like, through the state?
So they haven't been developed yet, but that's a conversation I'm having with the lieutenant governor, as well as the secretary of the Department of Ed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, there's nothing else? Thank you for your presentation and sharing with us. I would ask that this be moved to our next legislative session, and I would also ask that my colleagues support Bill Six of 2024. And that ends the session, the work session of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We will now open the floor for public comment. I'm not sure that we will receive any, but we will still move forward with the process. If you could please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
I come here as a private citizen and talk about the ghost gun bill.
That was good.
Okay, seeing and hearing no one? Anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, before we adjourn, just a reminder, if you have any proposed amendments to Resolution 75 of 2024, please share those via email with Chair Daniels before next Tuesday, November 26th legislative session.
We would ask you sharing with the law bureau as well, just so we can vet them through the process.
Yes, I assume that she would pass them along to the law bureau, but if you'd like to copy the law bureau on any proposed amendments, please add them as well. The time is 7:46 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.